Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the 2023-24 District Budget Hearing. In mid-March, the initial draft budget was presented by the administration to the Board as a starting point for the 2023-24 budget. In the meantime, the administration has continued to work on the budget, which will be presented to the Board this evening. The Board will have the opportunity to ask questions tonight, as well as over the next week. While the Board will not be voting on the budget tonight, the Board will have to vote tonight in order to send the revised budget to the County Office for their review. To reiterate, the Board will not be voting on the actual budget tonight, but rather at our next meeting, which will take place next Tuesday, May 9. With that being said, Ms. Good, can you please read the Statement of Compliance?
This meeting is being held under the form of the Open Public Meeting Act NJ SA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 7, 2023, April 27, 2023, and April 28, 2023. If any Board member or member of the public in attendance believe that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recorder will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the District homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the deformed public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of devices necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
You have the real call, please.
Ms. Catamatory.
Here.
Mr. Delator.
Here.
Mr. Vrana.
Here.
Mrs. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Pluffel.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
Ms. Norwood.
Here.
Ms. Takarian.
Here.
Ms. Angler.
Here. Next, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started with the budget presentation, I'd like to set a few ground rules. We will be opening up for questions at the end of the presentation. Please keep your questions until then to avoid any interruption of the presentation. I'll also ask that during the Q&amp;A, everyone keeps their questions to the information presented here tonight, which is the proposed 2023-24 budget. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson.
Okay, good evening. So, tonight, I'm going to start off the public hearing with an overview of the budget development and approval process, and then I'm going to shift to some budget highlights before I turn the presentation over to our Business Administrator, Ms. Good. So just a little background, on March 14, 2023, the 2023-2024 preliminary budget was presented to the Board of Education at a public meeting. The total general fund represented was $74,875,799. The tax levy was $59,942, which represented an 8.47% increase over the 2022-2023 budget. At that time, a summary of the preliminary budget was placed on our website. The Business Administrator and school administrators as well continued to work on the budget. On March 20, 2023, the preliminary budget was submitted to the Hudson County Superintendent of Schools, reflecting a revised preliminary tax levy of $58,748,317, which represented a 6.31% increase over the 22-23 budget. On April 17, 2023, additional changes were made to the preliminary budget, resulting in a newly revised preliminary tax levy of $58,716,311, which then represented a 6.25% increase over the 22-23 budget. On April 20, 2023, the Hoboken Public School District's preliminary budget was approved by the New Jersey Department of Education via the Hudson County Office. The budget was then advertised to the public, and the public hearing was scheduled for May 2, 2023. Throughout the process, the summary on the website was updated to reflect the modified budget figures and some of the changes. On May 2, which is this evening, at our public hearing, our school business administrator, as well as some of our Board members, will present the county-approved 2023-24 budget to the Board of Education and to the public. The district has until May 9, 2023, Board of Education meeting to finalize the budget and the tax levy. On May 9, 2023, the Board of Education will vote to adopt the budget. Changes cannot be made to the budget or to the tax levy after it is adopted by the Board of Education on May 9. So a few highlights related to the budget that's being presented this evening. This budget reflects five years' worth of lost state aid totaling $4,236,998. This budget also reflects the public school district's combined tax levy increase of .52 over the past two years. It reflects actual enrollment growth. It reflects contractual salary and benefits for all employees. This budget maintains all existing curricular programs, as well as curricular development and implementation cycles. It maintains all co- and extracurricular programs at all of our schools and grade levels, and it maintains all of our special education programs. It also includes new curricular initiatives at all levels. It includes a large increase to health benefits and a 5% increase for all other insurances. It includes anticipated expenditures, revenues, and estimated grants and entitlements, and it absorbs the pilot payment, which was budgeted in the 2022-2023 budget that was not yet received. The total budget being presented is $91,513,145. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Good, our Business Administrator, to give an overview of operating budget expenditures, operating budget revenues, and estimated grants and entitlements.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Please note that our operating budget expenditures total $73,423,703, and this is just our general fund. Our charter schools transfer is $12,248,509. So note that the charter school transfer information comes directly from the state of New Jersey. Our child study team is budgeted at $1,950,345. Our custodial services, which this includes the salary and benefits, is $3,258,741. Our employee benefits, which jumps significantly throughout the state of New Jersey for any and all districts and/or municipalities that are in the state health benefit plan. This represents an increase anticipated and which was suggested by our health insurance broker. So our employee health benefits, $4,424,553. Our tuition, this is out-of-district tuition, special education students, is budgeted in the general fund at $2,526,976. So note that we also have budgeted for out-of-district tuition for special education students only, an estimate of $914,000, and that's coming by way of an IDEA grant. Other benefits, other budget items, excuse me, is $5,981,536. Other support services is $2,122,347. Our regular program of instruction is $1.236,436. Our maintenance is $1,632,878, and our school-based budgets are $35,509,646. Our revenues, general fund only, our local tax levy is $58,716,311. Our state aid, which is unrestricted, is $7,394,852. Our budget of fund balance is $4,179,450. Our expected rent is $1.5 million. Our expected pilot payment is $1 million. Our expected tuition, which we do receive students from other public schools, estimated tuition is $250,000. Our unrestricted federal aid is $215,740. This is our ESEA grant money. Private donations, $100,000, and miscellaneous revenue is $65,000. Estimated grants and entitlements. We have preschool grant, we have the Title I, the Title IV, we have other restricted entitlements, we have Title II-A, IDEA Part B, student activities, Title III, and we have the transfer from the operating budget to the pre-K budget.
The next page shows three key expenditures driving the tax levy beyond the 2% cap. The first pressure is related to health and other insurance increases. This increase of $1.8 million is driven primarily by the state health benefit plan. The next pressure is K-12 enrollment growth. As we've talked many times before, the district enrollment continues to grow. The district has experienced a 22% increase from 2015 to 2016, and there is a 115-student increase projected over last year in this coming budget. That coupled with increased special education costs creates a pressure of $545,556. The third pressure is the amounts to be levied and transferred to the charter schools. The district has no discretion over these dollar amounts, but is told by the state the amount that needs to be budgeted and transferred. This increase is $555,868. The next slide shows our K-12 enrollment growth from 2015-16 through what's projected in 2023-24. As you can see, there's an increase of 415 students, and that's equal to 22%. The next slide shows the charter school budget transfer dating back to 2020 through 2024, and you'll see the increase in each of those years. So I'm going to talk a little bit about, you guys hear me okay? Revenue reduction areas that are also contributing to the tax levy exceeding the 2% cap. So first bullet point you'll see is a loss in state aid, and as Dr. Johnson referenced in an earlier slide, you're looking at a loss of over $4 million over a number of years, but the total loss in state aid year-over-year is a little over $1.1 million. There's also a loss in federal aid from ESSA that's a reduction totaling $484,000 and change. And last year, the Board budgeted for pilot payment from the 770 Jackson Project. We did not receive that pilot allocation from the city of Hoboken, so that gets absorbed back into the budget. So we're going to spend a brief minute talking about pilots, and I'm just going to go on the record to say I'm amazed anyone let me have a microphone to talk about this topic. Y'all needed a laugh for a minute. So let's talk about how pilots impact school taxes. And I think everyone in this room, looking around, could probably recite the definition of a pilot payment, but a payment in lieu of taxes is a financial incentive that municipalities can use to attract development to areas that are designated in need of improvement or rehabilitation. It's negotiated between a city and a developer. So in exchange for taking on a degree of financial risk, a developer can receive a property tax exemption for the length of the agreement, and that can be anywhere between 10 or 30 years. Instead of paying property tax on the improvements on their property, like you own a piece of land, you build a house, that's your improvement, the developer instead makes an annual payment that's known as a pilot to the municipality and the county. It's typically less than what the property tax would have been, and paying this lesser amount is a financial incentive that real estate developers will often say they need to make a project profitable. So how does that relate to why all of us are sitting here today? Property taxes for the bulk of taxpayers in the city of Hoboken or anywhere else in the state of New Jersey are typically the sum of three separate taxes. So you have your city tax, which here in Hoboken for last year was around 30, if you think of it as a dollar, it was around 37 cents of the dollar. Hudson County receives 34 cents on the dollar, and the school district for last year, 29 cents on the dollar. That 29 cents on the dollar is the primary source of Hoboken public school funding, whether you're talking about the students who are in this building, any of the other district buildings, or the three publicly-funded charter schools. State funding makes out up about 12% of the public school district's budget, and federal funding is about 3%. So when a pilot project is residential housing, the increased population brings increased cost to the city, just like any other residential development would. That's the need for fire, policing, sanitation, recreation. Those pilot payments help the city fund those additional costs, just like any of our tax dollars help with that. It may also bring more students and additional cost into public schools, but any resulting increase in public school funding will be paid primarily by Hoboken homeowners, who are already paying what I like to refer to as traditional property tax. So pilots don't generally support public schools unless action is taken by a governing municipal body to direct money that way. So typically, 95% of a pilot payment is paid to the municipality, 5% goes to the county, and like that other pie chart that shows 29 cents on the dollar going to the public schools, that doesn't happen in the case of a pilot. And I think the graph that Vicki has up there kind of shows you a little bit of a difference. I think the key takeaway from all of this is that pilots don't restrict a school district's ability to levy taxes. They restrict the number of taxpayers who contribute to that overall levy. So when Hoboken public schools enroll children from any number of piloted developments in town, that tax burden, let's say if it winds up being three, four, or five additional classrooms, that tax burden isn't shared by piloted developments, it's shared by everyone paying that traditional property tax. And that also would be the same for the money that goes to, you know, the charter schools. If one of those children is attending a charter school, the charter school transfer happens from the district.
We have to go back and, as we talk about tax levy, again, reiterate the whole notion of the reduction in state aid that has been happening over the past five years. It was the decision of New Jersey Legislature that certain districts, Hoboken one of several, would be seeing reductions in its state aid in its attempt to, in the case of Hoboken and other districts, for the local taxpayers be paying more of their fair share, the state felt, to public education. Rather than one big hit, the state has been weaning these districts, Hoboken among them, off of their state aid, and this chart demonstrates the effect of that over the past several years. This reading left to right then is simply one of the effects of the, looking at the reduction of state aid and how it may have impacted the tax levy over the course of several years. The tax levy has averaged about 5% over those past five years, and I look at the, we're all familiar with the 2% levy cap, but that concept was instituted by Governor Christie many, many years ago, and was sort of applied to all districts across the state as a way to give districts a sort of reasonable cost of living increase to anticipate increased expenses year-over-year. However, most districts do not face the state aid reduction that we are facing. They don't have, you know, three charter schools that were also our sister public schools, also funding, most districts do not have charter schools. So those are some of the things that are affecting the tax levy increase. The tax impact on homeowners, looking at some sample assessments, if you do the math that I did, you can take the $400,000 and look at next year's projected increase of $48, it comes out to be $12 a year increase on the school tax portion of your tax bill. I hesitate, but I shouldn't because it's public record. If someone wants to look at my own taxes, I did the calculation on that, and my share of taxes of this projected budget would be $210 next year. But you can figure out, anyone can figure out their own taxes by taking, by applying a $12 per $100,000 multiplier. And finally, the cost per pupil expense, as you can see, looks like it's coming down significantly, and indeed it has, but there's two things that I want to point out in this chart. One is increasing enrollment, of course, will affect per pupil cost, but there's something else that's happening here, which is that if you have ever tried to look at data on the New Jersey Department of Education website, it is dense and indecipherable and confusing. And one of the things that the state had done over the years was include preschool enrollment in the total school population and use that as the dividing, didn't, I'm sorry, didn't include the preschool, but included the preschool funding in the calculation. So it was inflated incorrectly. The adjustment has happened now where they are including the preschool, no, no, they're just including the K-12 population into the district operating budget, and that explains the much more realistic cost of $18,000 or rounded up to $19,000 per student, finally.
All right, so that concludes the budget presentation. On the last page, you will see there are a few email addresses if you do have budget questions. We will be taking questions tonight, both from Board members and from the audience. Board members will also have the week to ask any questions, so now I'll open it up to our Q&amp;A. I guess we'll start with Board members, and then if anyone in the audience has a question, if you could just raise your hand, we'll get to you.
I do have a question. It's sort of a rhetorical question because I kind of half-know the answer, but I was trying to find a definitive answer. What is school-based budgets?
School-based, okay.
Let me explain, because I think it's unique to SDA or former Abbott districts.
Correct. School-based budgets are budgets that are developed for each school. So for each of our schools, the principal actually, I meet with every principal, every director, and actually, they present their budget to me. So in our budget, in our state budget, each school is listed separate. They have their full budget within our budget. So you have the general fund budget, and then you have the school-based budget, and then you have the Fund 20 budget, which is grants and entitlements. So that's what school-based budgeting means, and that has to be done for any school district that was formerly known as an Abbott district.
Joyce, can I follow up on that? There's a separate line item for instruction, but that is just out-of-district instruction, right? That is not...
Correct. So what that is, so the instruction budget that is in the general fund budget is for any curriculum updates and initiatives, for any training, for any, well, training means staff development. It is also for anything that has to do with our ESL program. So those are, and also our aid, our instructional aid, is budgeted in the general fund budget as well.
And the out-of-district tuition is in that, or it's a separate item?
Out-of-district tuition is a separate item. Out-of-district tuition is budgeted on a tuition line, which is $2.9 million, and that is budgeted in a series of 11-0-0-5, blah, blah, blah. And that's the number that, the account code that we use for out-of-district tuition. Also note, as I said earlier, that we receive IDEA basic grant, and the IDEA basic grant funding that we receive, we use that money for out-of-district placements also. And that's for, the out-of-district placements include tuition and any related services that the student is entitled to, but please note that transportation is not included in that number. Transportation is budgeted on a separate transportation line.
Am I right in saying that you're required, were required to pay for transportation for out-of-district placements?
Absolutely, 100%.
Ms. Good, just staying on out-of-district placements, can you just clarify that, does that only, does our budget only include district students, or does that capture district and charter out-of-district placements?
In this budget, we have one charter school out-of-district placement.
Okay. It's also important to know that when you're a local public school district that has private schools within as well, a lot of times people focus only on, you know, the traditional public school and then the traditional charter schools, but when there are private schools, parochial schools also in a community, if there's a child that needs home instruction or what they call bedside instruction, what will typically happen is even if the child does not reside in the community, the local public school district has to cover the cost of the bedside of home instruction. So for example, if we have a child that is being educated in the city of Hoboken, let's say in the Hudson School as an example, or in Mustard Seed or All Saints, and they live in North Bergen or Jersey City, wherever it might be, and the child falls ill, or a situation occurs where the child is required to be educated outside of the school, whether it be in a residential placement for social, emotional, psychiatric care, whatever it might be, that child is still entitled to be educated. It's not the resident district that has to cover the cost of that instruction, it's the district in which the school is located. So we also do pick up that cost, and it happens, you know, it happens each year. So it's not just the issue of out-of-district, traditional out-of-district placements, it's also the issue of private school education when the child is placed in an out-of-district facility.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask another?
Sure.
This budget maintains all existing... This budget maintains all existing programs, but there's a note that there's new curricular initiatives at all levels. Dr. Johnson, I don't know, could maybe mention a couple?
Yeah, so, I mean, every single year, the district is on what's called a curricular implementation cycle. And so no matter what the curricular topic is, whether it be ELA or math or science, it's on a cycle. So every few years, the curriculum is updated based on the state's guidelines and we also will go through, whether it be textbook adoptions, et cetera. So some of the new curricular initiatives that are in this budget include everything from a revision of the middle school language arts curriculum to the adoption of a new middle school language arts curriculum called Study Sync. We also have budgeted in, we have an academic support center at the high school. So we have some initiatives budgeted for that. We have a few new elective courses. Next year, we're going to be offering pre-AP calculus. Oh, that's in this budget as well. We have some special education initiatives because when we talk about new curriculum, it's not just regular education. So at the high school, we just started a new transition life skills program this year in which we have a core group of children who are being educated at the high school and beyond the age of 18 to age 21. They are actually embedded in the community and go through a work-study type program with a job coach. And so some of those initiatives are embedded in this budget. So those are just a few of the highlights, but there are some other smaller revisions that are in this budget as well.
Yes, sorry. I understand that one reason for the increase in the tax levy this year is because of the $1 million pilot revenue that was not received in this current year. There is a revenue line for the $1 million pilot revenue for the, for, you know, future year, for 2023, 2024. Is that something that we believe we're going to receive or we hope we're going to receive and we just want to make sure that we're as proven as possible with the tax levy? So we're going to anticipate that?
Okay, so, yes. When I met with the county office and I discussed our revenue sources, they realized that we have not received the pilot money this year. So I informed them that I do have an offset for this year's pilot money, which would be extraordinary aid, okay? But however, for next year, I don't know what our extraordinary aid number will be. So I am anticipating that I will receive or we will receive the pilot money in next year's budget.
Thank you, Ms. Good.
Any other questions?
This is either for Dr. Johnson or Ms. Good. I'm looking at the financial report with respect to assets, liabilities and equities. There's a section on fixed assets and those asset classes, well, I'm calling them fixed assets because they're an asset class that indicates buildings, improvement, plumbing, et cetera. There's also an indicator of the estimated useful lives. Is that a, should I be looking at that information with the eye to, as these assets age out, they are becoming now liabilities on our operating line? Or is this simply the data that needs to be used for the depreciation schedule?
That's the data that needs to be used for the depreciation schedule.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so note that we have a company that does our fixed asset reporting for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Are there any questions from the audience?
Kevin Davis, 1031 Clennan Street, Hoboken, New Jersey. I have three questions, but one of them is from the legal notice and not the presentation. Do I have to pull that question since it's only related to the presentation?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, we will have a public comment section at the end of the meeting that, I mean, these questions were supposed to relate to the budget presentation, as I noted at the beginning. So if you can keep your questions to just simply the budget, you can make a comment during the public comment portion.
It was in the budget but not the presentation because I saw it on the legal notice that was posted on the school website, on the budget page?
Go ahead if it's related to the budget posting.
Okay. So I'll just read all three. The first one I had was what changes were made since the March preliminary budget that resulted in a smaller property tax increase? The second question is, is, has there been any changes with the methodology for estimating future enrollment in terms of, in the past, when you projected future enrollment, is the methodology for projecting it different this year? And the last one, which was related to legal notice, is why was there a decrease for this next school year in the capital budget from the previous one?
Okay, so I can, I'll answer your question. Okay, the capital budget, they have, we had lease purchases. Those have sunsetted, they're done. They ended actually last year. So that's finished. So we have one lease purchase now, which is very, very tiny. And so that's the only one that is there. So that's why the capital budget has gone down. Your other question is how come the tax levy decreased?
Why is it increased less than March?
Okay, I'll give you my answer. Why is it less than March? It's because what happened was, and if you could so note in the public notice, that we didn't list the number of special education students because what happened was the special education department is bringing students back in to programs that are in district. So we do now have a final, we have an estimated special education number of students that will be leaving the district at this time. But as you know, that's a moving target because as students come in and they go out, then that is adjusted. So at the time that the budget was developed, it was a question mark on how many students we were bringing back in and how many new students may or may not be going out and what programs they would be going into. So note that Dr. Johnson said that we do have in this year's budget, students that are aging out of special education, meaning that they are between the ages of 20 to 21, and we only need to educate them up till their 21st birthday. So that also is why there was an adjustment.
Is there a second question?
Yeah, those were his two questions.
Changes of methodology.
Yeah, in terms of enrollment, there really isn't a change in the methodology. The enrollment projections, I would say, there's two different paths for enrollment projections. The first one is like a demographic study. So districts will have a demographer come in and do the actual study, which we've done and I'm positive that demographic study is on the website. I think there's two of them. There's like an updated one, an original and then an updated one. But for the budget purposes, what happens is there's something called the ASSA report, right? And that's the application for state aid. And basically, we get that application for, with all the numbers that kind of feed into the state aid calculation. Those numbers come directly from the October 15th count. And so what ends up happening is you're always kind of a year behind. So what will happen is in October 15th, on October 15th of any given school year, we provide the numbers of how many students are there on that particular day, October 15th, right? That's the snapshot. And then what ends up happening is that number is used for the enrollment projection for state aid for the following year. And that's actually calculated by the Department of Ed, not the district. So sometimes that number is correct, sometimes that number is not correct. It's almost more often close to being correct. I think we had one year, and I want to say it was maybe five years ago, that the number was kind of off. But again, next year's number, the projection that they're showing is 100 and some odd students more, we're actually projecting more than that in reality, but they're using the number from October 15th. So it's always one year behind. So the methodology on our end doesn't necessarily change, it just comes down to the state's calculation. And they're not projecting either. Sometimes people think the Department of Ed projected correctly or incorrectly. They're just using the number of actual students in seats on October 15th. 2022, 2022 is being used, October 15th, 2022 is the number that's being used for the state aid projection for 23, 24. And then in October 2023, that number will be used for the 24, 25 budget.
And our projections are based on actual enrollments that we see since the...
Correct.
Moving into a new school.
Moving into, moving into a new school year and everybody...
The state doesn't know about that, moving about it.
Until the following year. So it's always one year off. And Hoboken is just a little bit different because there's so many ins and outs. So for example, right now, if we have 336 kindergarten children enrolled, that doesn't necessarily mean that 336 children are going to be in seats in September. That's how many are enrolled right now. It could be less, it could be more, but throughout the summer, we're going to have, for every five kids that move out of town, we'll have some that will move in town. And once in a while, it gets, it's a little bit off balance and sometimes it's spot on where it's the ins and outs match. So we don't really know that until later in the summer. And in some cases, we don't know it until the first day of school and we see how many children are actually here. But we do a pretty aggressive campaign contacting families so that we can budget appropriately for staff members that would be in classrooms. And so while Ms. Good was talking about predominantly special education, when you asked, you know, what changed from the original budget to, I think it was March 14th until later, like how did that number continue to go down a little bit? You know, she's being a little modest, it's not, it wasn't just special ed, there were also other things involved, maybe not as large as the special ed costs, but they were things, a lot of conversations with building principals, do we need this? Do we not need that? Can we remove this from the budget? Can we add that to the budget? And so as a result of that, it did come down. Maybe not necessarily the 50% that we hoped it would come down, but we did try to do a set of different iterations so that we could actually see, you know, that levy come down as much as possible. And we got to a point where when we submitted the budget on April 20th, we did kind of feel that on the basis of a lot of those revenue losses, that was really like where we were able to operate without massive reductions. And this is why the public hearing takes place so that if Board of Ed members or if the community wants to provide suggestions of things, you know, we then have to go back and see if, you know, there's other changes that would need to be made. And if not, then we go to the actual adoption process, which is on May 9th.
Thank you.
Pat Waiters, page seven, revenue deduction, reductions. I have a quick, just three questions. Well, you answered the last one. So this is not going to be written in stone if we do come across some errors or whatever members of the public want to present? Is that what you just said, Dr. Johnson?
So, yeah, typically what happens in the public hearing is exactly what...
For the ninth, for the ninth, when you're adopted, there can be a possibility in some of these...
After the ninth, no, but between now and the ninth, this is the opportunity.
Because what I'm, what I'm going to be speaking on is the loss in aid. We all know we had the three years almost of the pandemic. Is any of those funds allocated in this budget? Any of the money that they received and, wait a minute, I'm real quick. Any of the money that they received in those grants and those PPEs and SSHs and all of those good cushiony dollars that the city council did the same thing? Mysteriously, if it wasn't a pandemic and you did your budget, that money normally is not added in there from the three years. So I want to know, is that money being calculated in this? And with respect to the pilot contribution, I've been hearing about this 770 for the last eight years or more maybe, but who do we go after? Is the board accountable for getting the pilot money that was promised to them? I mean, we quick to say that the developer, the developer and the city council members, once the, I was there, once the money is there, this same money been sitting there, you haven't received yours, the charter school haven't received theirs. Who do you go after on a state level, right here in our municipality? Who's responsible for seeing that you get this pilot money?
Okay, so I'll answer...
And are you adding this in the budget?
Okay, so I won't answer about the pilot money, but I will answer about the COVID funds. Okay, so there were three COVID grants. The first COVID grant ended last June. The second COVID grant ends this, actually September 30th of this year. The third COVID grant will end September 2024. No, those dollars that remain in that third COVID grant are not in this budget. Now, I'm going to tell you why. It's a grant. And when we wrote the grant, we had to write the grant specifically for how the money would be budgeted and how the money would be spent. So the money that is left over in the grant is already budgeted for specific programs and specific salaries were in there, programs were in there, related services were in there, facility, addressing facility needs. So the reason why that's not in here is because that grant was approved two years ago. And the budget was approved by the county office and the state two years ago. And so note that we are a district, unlike others, that are not returning any of those dollars. So all the money that we received in Hoboken Board of Education, the way the money was allocated and approved is how the money was spent. Also note that if there, if there is ever a need between now and September, well, really between now and June 30th, 2024, in order for us to change plans on the budget, we would have to do an amendment and the amendment would have to be approved by the county office and sent to the state of New Jersey for approval.
All right, so the county will have the same information you just gave me about the last grant because I'm seeing December 23, 2023 is the last one. So then they extended another one, this one you're telling me for 2024, which is not in this budget. I just want to make sure my numbers are right.
Correct. The grants are not in this budget. Okay?
None of them, none of the grants?
Right. The first grant is spent fully. The second grant is about 90% spent, okay? And the third grant ends September 30th, 2024. Now, the grant that ends on September 30th, 2024, that was a $5.8 million grant. That grant, we spent down, I would say about half at this point. So the remainder, like I said before, not to repeat myself, the grant has its budget, the budget was approved as submitted, and that's the way the money is going to be spent at that, you know, at this time.
Thank you for that. And the last one, the loss in federal aid, that's with the charter schools you mentioned, right?
No, the loss in federal aid has nothing to do with the charter schools. The loss in federal aid was because the powers that are in Trenton, it's called S2. Some, someone thought Hoboken in the past received... received more money than they were entitled to. So therefore, um, they have began holding what is known as S two funds from the S two districts. And we're one of the S two districts that funds were withheld from.
All righty, thank you so much for the information.
Also note that we lost state aid in preschool this year as well.
The K to, the K, the three-year-old, three and four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're quite welcome. Any other, hi.
Hi, Eduardo Gonzalez, Hoboken resident. And I'm speaking as a Hoboken resident and no other affiliation. Um, just a couple of questions, comments, like in page, I guess it would be six, the charter school transfer budget. Again, it, it, right, it shows that it's going up, but if you adjust it for the per pupil cost, so if you take into account, based on the asset numbers, the number of public charter school students it represents, the number has actually been more or less flat at thirteen or fourteen thousand, uh, dollars per public charter school student. And then in terms of the percentage that public charter school students are of the, the whole. Um, so in twenty twenty, public charter school students were twenty percent of the pie of all public school students. And in this twenty twenty-four, they are twenty-seven percent. Um, so kind of, even though the pie has gotten bigger, our number has gotten bigger as well. Their public choose, public charter school students, uh, percentage of the pie has gotten bigger as well. And in terms of the-
Do you have a question regarding the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I would just like, so one of them would be like, just curious, why not show it also as a per pupil cost?
Well, it's an expenditure for the district. So that's why we show it the way it's shown. Um, because we're directed by the state, no discretion by the district, what dollar amount to transfer to levy, to raise the taxes to cover, and then transfer to the charter schools. So we can think of it as a health insurance increase, a charter increase. It's, it, it's just an increase in dollars that we need to account for.
And then with the pilot, um, it, this, there is a question. Um, but just to add some color, I like that, that you guys showed the budget or the pilot stuff. Um, and actually, all public, all public school students in Hoboken are losing roughly eight million dollars. Like, if you take it a step further and you, you do that calculation and look at the assessed values and all that stuff, it's eight million dollars in tax revenues that the whole public school students are losing. Um, the question would be to the, the million-dollar pilot. Um, the city of Hoboken just recently passed their budget, and I don't think they had an allocation of a million dollars in their budget. So just curious, what, what would happen? You mentioned that, I guess this past year, there were some additional aid that, that you accounted for. Um, just curious what it would be this year because, again, so far, the, the city of Hoboken hasn't put it in their budget that they're going to allocate a million dollars, um, for any pilot money. And then just the last question is just, um, the cost per pupil on that last page. I know Tom mentioned it, but i- if you can explain again what, what changed and how that's accounted for? Like, it went from thirty-three to, to eighteen, which is obviously good.
So I think, Tom, I mean, do you want to address it again? Or I can certainly address it. Um, obviously, our head counts increased, which would have an impact on that. But what Tom had mentioned, in the past, the state was including preschool dollars, but not including preschool heads. So it was a dollar figure that included preschool dollars. The head count only included K to twelve head count. So the number was inflated. So now they've made the dollars and the heads apples to apples. Um, and therefore, the per head cost is more accurate than it used to be.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Oh, we have one more?
I think, um, now we're going, oh, I'm sorry.
We have one more, come on. No problem.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you don't mind if I raise this a little bit. I'd just like to just ask a few questions, maybe, that you could, um, and pardon me for saying this phrase, maybe dumb it down a little bit for those that don't know the lingo, uh, of some of the stuff. Just briefly, if you could, um, I don't want you to rehash things that you've already said. But if I am correct, you're saying that the, from where we started in, uh, March to today, the total budget is ninety-one million point five, let's say. So the final for, for, um, the citizens and the residents of the district um, would not be where we started at six. It's going to be five for right now, as you're going to vote for it. So it could be sent to, to, uh, the district is what I understood.
We have to vote tonight to send the revised budget to the county for their review. We're not voting on actually approving the budget.
Yeah, I, I follow that. I'm just saying that this is what we're going to send to, to that. Okay, so the residents should expect that possibly that's going to be their, their tax levy. Sorry, I'll pick that up in a moment.
Go ahead, Tom.
On page five- The district, the, the, what says here, the increase is going to be five percent is on-
No.
Tax.
No.
That's what I'm asking.
Six point two five.
Six.
And the local piece of that, that that equates to is not the ninety-one million. It's-
The fifty-five, right. It's the tax levy only.
Fifty-eight million, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Fifty-eight million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars is the total levy, which is a six point two-five percent increase in the tax levy over the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Okay, six, okay. Six point two is what we're sending to see if we can get-
Six point two five.
See, I knew that I needed to have it a little-
And then I think a, a powerful slide to look at to accompany the numbers and the percentages is the tax impact on homeowners. So you can look at assessed values and what the annual increase would be.
Number four, yes?
That's, uh, towards the back.
No, towards the back.
And I actually will improve upon Tom's math. It's a dollar per month, per hundred thousand dollars of assessed valuation.
Dollar per month.
So if someone lives in a seven hundred, a home that's assessed at seven hundred thousand dollars, their tax impact for the year would be eighty-four dollars.
Okay. And I would also like to ask, and again, if you could, and thank you for, for the answers. When we say students, when you have up here the K to twelve, one fifteen student projection, then on the next chart, it says four, uh, four hundred and four hundred and fifteen, very small, I can see it. The difference between that, which is the actual projection, the one here in green?
So the hundred and fifteen is the project, the projected increase between this current school year and next year. Uh, but the four hundred and fifteen is just showing the projected increase from two, going back to two thousand fifteen, sixteen through twenty-three, twenty-four.
So the actual plus-
Right, actual plus projected. So the, so in this case, the actual would be three hundred and the projected is an additional one hundred and fifteen between this year and next year.
Okay, and I won't ask you about the pilots because somebody else already did. And I just want to know if I could find the page. I'm so sorry for this.
While you're looking for that, your, your question was asked about what the million dollars of the pilot are, is based on? It's actually based on not what's projected to be allocated that we think would be allocated for the pilot payments for this coming year. It's actually based on what we believe was collected in the previous years that are still, that's still being held, understand, and outstanding. So it's not at all a projection of what's coming. It's an understanding of what's potentially sitting there.
To follow up to that question is, what's sitting there, I want to quote, "It's nothing that you can demand, give it to me right now." Is that correct? It's something that you could just hope and pray that somewhere along the line, it's in the city budget and it comes over to you?
It requires council action.
Obviously. Yeah, okay, uh, let's go back to where I was. And then the cost, the cost per pupil that is projected here, this is, this is for twenty-three, twenty-four. It's a projection, it's not an accurate number because it's, it's one, it's a big, I, I know that someone else asked it, but it's a big distance between, uh, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three to that one. I mean, I see it's going down, but then if you tell me there's more students, is that we're cutting somewhere, whatever, how are we?
No, so this is accurate, um, very accurate. It's based on actual dollars and actual heads. What is the big, the biggest driver? That's if you look at nineteen twenty, at the thirty-three thousand, seven ninety-two versus the twenty-three, twenty-four, is the methodology the DOE use to calculate the per head cost. So in the past, they inflated the dollars by including the pre-K dollars, but they did not include the pre-K heads. So, um, it, it created a higher dollar amount per pupil when you're including dollars with no kids to, um, offset that. Does that make sense?
In addition, it's also important to know that, um, because I, I, I feel like in the past, people have looked at the enrollment and then looked at the budget and then tried to divide it and come up with a number.
That's it.
Um, but there's an actual calculation. These numbers come out of the Department of Education. They're given to the school districts as to what the per pupil cost is. There are certain things that are included in the per pupil cost. There are certain things that are not included. So, um, it's not as simple as just doing a, a simple division between it. So, um, our per pupil cost is, uh, provided to us at the time of the budget, uh, input into the system. So we have the ability to get this number kicked out every single year. So it's not us calculating it, it's the Department of Ed, and then they tell you what the per pupil cost is.
Just as well as the charter schools when they allocate some the same.
Same, exactly.
Yeah, and there's, there should be no rift between one or the other because nobody, yeah, exactly. There is neither charter school nor you have, uh, control mainly over what's designated as this, this amount has to be allocated to this. And then they have discretion to do what they want.
Right.
Okay, um, just quickly, a quick question. Um, I took a note that transportation is not in the budget. Where does transportation get budgeted in?
No, transportation is in the budget. It's just, I, we didn't list it separately on, yeah, on the spreadsheet.
I think the question was asked if it was included in the instruction line. It's not included in the instruction line, but it's included in another line item in the budget.
So that's right, and our transportation is for out-of-district, for out-of-district population, our field trips, and, um, any of our sporting activities that require us to travel to other, other schools, other locations.
And you know that this is my, um, perennial question. Uh, again, I don't, I, I just ask it, uh, because it's, should be asked about, uh, school lunches. Um, I, I know that, that sometimes they're not usually discussed in budgets and such, but I always ask because sometimes people, um, are not able to qualify for certain things. And again, I think I may have asked in a couple of meetings past. Um, has anything or, um, any possibility that any clarification that, um, parents could have for that? I mean, I don't know if it's a budget question, but-
I'm, I'm not sure what, what your question is.
Well, is, is, is school, school lunches for the children? Uh, you know that I always ask it. Uh, is it in, in any way affected? Are the children affected with any type of school? Anything that you took off here for lunches or anything like that? That's my question, I have to ask it.
No, no, school lunches are not budgeted in our budget, no.
That, that was a question. And then my last question, and I'll leave you alone, is, and in the other, in the other, um, when you have here, we're talking about especially this, this building, which still has scaffolding outside. Um, in the budget here, did you, where it has the other, did you have any estimation of the construction outside or the, you know, anything that, how much that-
The renovation on this building or-
Not, not the renovation, the emergency repairs are.
The emergency-
But if that's not in the budget, then I'll ask it in the public.
No, the emergency repair on this building is not part of this budget.
It should be in the, it should be in the current budget, yes? Not this one, but I mean, the one that's running.
Okay, so what we have in every school district in the state of New Jersey, you have what is known as a maintenance reserve account. And a maintenance reserve account is an account for any emergencies that are unforeseen. Um, so we do have a maintenance reserve account. Um, also note that we, we also have a capital reserve account. And so if it's a capital project, then the capital project would be budgeted and funded out of that capital reserve account. But so note that in order for us to take money out of the capital reserve account, we would have to take money out of the capital reserve account one or two ways. The first way is at budget time. But we have to have a full approved project before we could put that project in the budget. So this fully approved project, the fix of this building, is not, we don't have that at this time, so it could not go into this budget. So if there was an emergency of any sort, um, then we would go to the maintenance reserve account and we can only remove money or withdraw money out of maintenance reserve account by board resolution. Now, if it so happened that we needed to tap into the capital reserve account and we did not do it at budget time, we would have to go to the Commissioner of Education and the district would have to discuss the situation on why we would need their approval in order to go into the capital reserve account to address whatever concern there is.
I appreciate the answer. Thank you so much. Thank you all for, for answering and for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Okay, so now we'll move on to consent agenda, uh, which is just the, the one item that we've discussed. Um, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Calamitori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Connaught?
Yes.
Mr. Pluffler?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Kirian?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, next we'll move on to public comments on agenda and on agenda items. Nope. Okay, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.